This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, folks. We did call to order our Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 5, 2021, and then went into executive session in which we discussed two items. The first item was contract negotiations with Cranberry Valley Golf Course, the Hostel Saloon. We had a detailed discussion on best approach to retain a Hostel Saloon at Cranberry Valley, and then taking steps to move forward. The second item we discussed was a general strategy to address the various union contracts coming forward, and those discussions will continue probably for the next least couple of months, maybe longer. We then at 6:39 left the executive session and moved to the open meeting. And at this point, Joe, if you have the flag ready, we can do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll have that in just one moment.
Thank you, Joe. Please, if you wish, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Individual liberty and justice.
Thank you. Before moving on to our weekly briefing, I do, very sadly, wish to report and comment on the untimely death of Peg Rose. I learned on, I was off Cape last week, I learned on Saturday morning that she'd passed out, passed away late tonight before. When I returned on Monday to get my mail, unbelievably, I had two letters from Peg in my mail, so it was very sudden. She was a great lady and volunteer for the town of Harwich. I'm going to take a moment, and I'm sure I'm losing something else, something out, because I'm not sure there was anything in Harwich that she was not involved in. She was past president of of the Friends of Harwich Town Band. She was an active member in the Town Band group. I got a nice letter from them reminding me of all the activities she was in. She was president of the Harwich Historical Society for some time. She was a vital force in recreating the Crowe Barn. She was a member of the Boulder Information Commission. She was a volunteer to the Harwich Conservation Trust. She was active with the Chamber of Commerce. She managed as a volunteer the Snack Shack for the Mariners for many years. I used to argue with her there because I tried to convince her that they needed to serve, I was speaking to, I guess, Cape Cod fans now, baseball fans, but they needed to serve the Hurler and the Sinker. A god-awful sandwich is a servant D Y, which he roundly would take no, told me to get lost in that discussion, so we had fun with that. Now, she, as I say again, I can't think of anyone that was involved in, involved so intensely, was almost every volunteer activity in town. I will comment or advise you as well that if you wish to send remembers or cards, you can send them to her children, Kristen Rose, or Tim Rose, and to Peg Rose's address at 87 Gray Neck Road here in Harwich. Repeat myself, but she will be sorely missed. And I do think that, Emily, do you, we have personnel lines working most recently on Boulder Information and some other, would you wish to comment as well? I know I got a nice note from Chris Joyce as well, but I'll remembering Peg.
Thank you, Larry. I appreciate the opportunity to just share some memories of Peg tonight as well. You did a good job on that list of activities that Peg was involved in. I was a little worried when preparing for this tonight that I would leave something out, or that I might capture everything, but we could be here until midnight talking about all of the things that Peg had a hand in here in Harwich. I didn't have a chance to know Peg as well as some, or as long as others, but having had the opportunity to serve two terms with her on the Voter Information Committee was just truly an honor. Shortly after meeting her, it became evident that she had a hand in everything, every part of this community, from the arts to Harwich history to business to conservation and town government. Her volunteer efforts were vast. Her dedication and her commitment to serving this community were, to me, a textbook example of what it means to be actively civically engaged. She didn't cherry pick one interest or organization. She was an equal opportunity supporter of everything that makes Harwich the strong and vibrant community that it is. So, in my opinion, I feel like the world needs more people like Peg Rose, people who are willing to devote so much of their time and talents to supporting the greater good, to building stronger communities, to preserving our history while also keeping an eye on the future. Over the years, I've heard some residents jokingly refer to Peg as the mayor of Harwich, and honestly, I can't think of a better title for her. It really encapsulates all that she did for this community and all that she meant to this community. She was a model citizen and an exemplary Voter Information Committee member, and we will miss her. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to just honor her memory and her service to the town tonight.
Thank you, Emily. She was so important to our community that I now wish to open it up for other selectmen to make a comment. I tried to summarize some of that, but Ed, and then I'll go to the others. Ed?
Larry, I, like you, learned of Peg's passing early Saturday morning, and, like you, opened up my mailbox about noon time only to pull out the letter from the Harwich Historical Society thanking me for renewing my membership, signed by President Peg Rose. It was always, it was always a challenge to find something that you were going to volunteer with and run into Peg and ask her if she was going to be volunteering also, only to find that she had signed up long before you even knew about it. I mean, she was that involved in everything that happened in town, and I believe the town will be a sadder for her passing.
Thank you, Ed. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, like others, I knew her in a lot of different other capacities, too, but I know that she was, she dressed me as Obed Brooks, and I don't know how many other characters for the graveyard in October each year, but I'm not sure that anybody actually understood that she was integral to the Human Services grants in Yarmouth that used to go through the Yarmouth Board of Health. She was, she basically was the mayor of Yarmouth also. So, she's going to be missed in a lot of different places. And the one thing that nobody has brought up yet is that in everything that she did, regardless of how she was stretched in different directions, she did so cheerfully with a smile.
Thank you, Don.
We could use more than that in the world.
Yeah. Michael?
I would just echo some of the comments made by the other board members and as well as Emily. Peg, I'm a fairly newbie to town government and volunteering. Very early on, Peggy told me what I was going to do and how I was going to do it. And she was, she was often very vocal and never, never hesitated to call me out when we had a difference in opinion, in a very good way. Last time I saw Peggy was just, it was only a few weeks back, but she was present for the tour that they gave me of Brooks Academy. And again, her humor, her humor and fun will be remembered always by me.
Yep, great. Thank you, folks. We'll keep her in our minds and hearts going forward. Joe, next on the agenda is a weekly briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it right over to our Public Health Director, Dr. Katie O'Neil, for her update.
Good evening, everyone. Very sorry to hear about Peg. I never got a chance to meet her, but she really sounded like an amazing woman. To date, Harwich has seen a total of 665 positive cases of COVID-19, which we have 56 active cases, and our positivity rate is at 5.63%, which leaves us still in the red designation. Many other Cape towns are also in the red, and we're seeing a much younger population test positive. The current average age of all the red towns is 38 years old, and Harwich is not that far off with an average of 42 years old. The good news is that a total of 3,755 residents have been fully vaccinated. An additional, almost 6,000 have received at least one dose, so we are moving in the right direction. Last Tuesday, the Harwich Fire Department was able to vaccinate 42 individuals in senior housing, and today, they actually got to do another additional 55 individuals in their homes for the homebound. I definitely want to thank Outer Cape Health, Emily Mitchell, Sue Giselle, Jen Clark, Chief LeBlanc, Deputy Chief Thornton, Paul Finn, and all of the Harwich EMS that assisted in this effort. It was a lot of work, and it was a great teamwork effort into it. If anyone is still homebound and was not included in this round of vaccinations, please contact either the Health Department or the Council on Aging, and they can be placed on the next list. Starting today, individuals who are 55 or older are eligible to receive the vaccine, as well as people with one certain medical condition. Vaccine registration can be found at vaxfinder.mass.gov. Testing is still available at both Outer Cape Health and Cape Cod Healthcare. And in closing, I'd like to just remind everyone to please keep up with the mask use, social distancing, and good hand hygiene. These are all really needed in conjunction with vaccinations in order to get the numbers out of, under control, excuse me. Any questions from the board?
Questions for Katie? Thanks for the report. I guess we can, we can take some comfort that is high, but it's now decreasing again, or?
So, numbers are still unfortunately increasing, but the vaccination numbers are also increasing, so hopefully we'll get enough people vaccinated, and the numbers will start to decrease.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Joe, it's okay. I'll move on to Cindy.
Good evening, everyone. No new updates on the business sector, but I did want to just touch on what everyone's already started to say about Peg, and hopefully my voice doesn't crack, but I've known Peg for over 20 years. She and I sat on the Cape Cod Chambers Sports Committee and brought NCAA tournaments to Harwich back when we first met. Our charitable foundation, whether Peg was trying to get me to bake pies for the antique fair, or helping us with the road race, and being our food heat quality control tester at the Toast of Harwich, she had much to do with us. Our foundation met over the weekend because it was very important for us, because she was a member of our board of the charitable foundation, to give back to many wonderful organizations that held a very special place in Peg's heart. So, the Harwich Chamber charitable foundation will be donating $1,000 to each of the following in Peg's name, and we hope that you'll all join us in picking one of those as well, if you'd like to. Brooks Academy, where, as we all know, she, as part of the Harwich Historical Society, was president. The Cape Cod Theater Company, Harwich, home of Harwich Junior Theater, she was an usher, loved to usher all the guests into the productions. The Harwich Town Band, the Harwich Mariners, and the Children's Center. We will also be starting a yearly scholarship of $500 to the Cape Cod Theater Company, home of Harwich Junior Theater, for a young person who may not be able to afford to participate in the arts through the theater. These, as I said, were all very, very special organizations of Peg's. As we all said, she volunteered, and you saw her everywhere. She was a very, very, very special person. We lost a dear friend, and for me, an extremely amazing volunteer. So, thank you all. Anything that anyone, if you are looking to donate in her name, those are the organizations that we will be contributing to this week, and thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next on the agenda is an update from Emily Mylan on the Brooks Academy, Brooks Library. Emily, you're on before, so you're up again, I guess.
Yeah, here I am again. Thanks, Larry. I'm just here to provide you guys with an update on the latest Voter Information Committee program called Know Your Town. We started this program last year in person prior to the pandemic, and we had invited department heads to come and provide a presentation at the library to community members, and had to kind of put an end to that when the pandemic hit. And in response to those limitations on in-person meetings, we decided to take things in a different direction this year. It was really important to us to bring back the program, because we think it's a really valuable way to get information out to residents about all of our different departments and the representatives of those departments. So, we wanted to come up with a format that would work during the pandemic. So, I know podcasts are kind of a relatively new form of media, and not everyone is familiar with them, but it presented some challenges or some advantages for us in terms of being able to record segment remotely at the convenience of both participants, and it's also available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, if you're a smartphone user, you can listen while you drive around running errands or go for a walk, because the podcasts are found online. You can go directly to the library's website, brooksfreelibrary.org, and under our program menu, you'll see a BFL podcast page, and on that page are all of the episodes of the podcast. If you're already listening to podcasts on Spotify or Apple or Google, you can just search Brooks Free Library, and the podcast will pop up. So, I just wanted to come today and give your viewers a quick idea of the program format and content. As I said before, we invited representatives from each town department, and we asked them to answer four basic questions. So, the first question was, what is your department's mission or role, and how was it impacted over the course of the last year by COVID? The second question related to how departments interact or collaborate with other town departments, and really what we wanted to accomplish with that was to give everyone an understanding of where the departments fit within the larger organization of town government. The third question related to finances, so we asked for the department representatives to give us kind of an overview of revenue and expenditures for their department, and as well as special funds that some departments might have access to, revolving funds, enterprise funds, those sort of things. And then the final question, which is always something the Voter Information Committee is sure to ask, is how residents could stay informed or get involved with each department. So, we wanted to really highlight opportunities to serve through volunteer opportunities or by becoming a member of an elected or an appointed board that might be related to each department. We were thrilled to have about 70% to 75% of town departments that were able to participate. So, we have a total of 15 episodes, which is roughly about six or seven hours of content, but I promise it's an easy 20 to 40-minute segments, so it's not six straight hours of content. We did decide at our last board meeting, or our last committee meeting, excuse me, on Wednesday, to record a final brief kind of wrap-up of the series, and I'll be publishing that later this week. But essentially, that wrap-up is just a call to action for residents of Harwich to direct them to the Voter Information Committee page, where they can access a list of the current vacancies on the various boards and committees, as well as to find out how to go about applying to fill those vacancies. So, we're really excited about this new podcast series. We think it's a great opportunity for residents to get up to date and informed before town meeting, have the entire month of April to work through those various episodes. We'll also be doing a few additional programs this month that are pretty standard Voter Information Committee programs that we do every year. The first is our Financial State of Harwich program, which will be recorded later this week on the 8th, and then we'll be doing a review of the annual town meeting warrant, and that will take place on the 20th. Both of those programs will be available on Channel 18 and/or the Channel 18 YouTube page. And then the final program before the May election will be our Candidates Forum. Each year, we record segments with candidates who are running unopposed, and then we also host a debate, which is moderated by the League of Women Voters of Cape Cod, and they help us moderate a debate for any of the contested races. So, that will take place in early May. I'm sure that we'll be back before then to give you some more information about the Candidates Forum, but we hope that you'll, you know, tune into the podcast and check that out. The full schedule can be found on the library's webpage, and as I said, you can find that on any podcast platform, or directly on the Voter Information webpage, or the library webpage. The final thing I wanted to just mention tonight for anyone who might be interested, the library recently subscribed to a virtual Wall Street Journal subscription. So, any library cardholder can go to brooksfreelibrary.org, click on the eLibrary menu on our main page, and scroll down until you see the Wall Street Journal. You can sign up for an account using an email address and password, and you'll be able to log into the Wall Street Journal to read online. I believe that there's an app as well. So, we just wanted to let everyone know that there's a new resource that's easily accessible right on the library webpage.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Questions for Emily? Nice report. We have a lot of things to watch. Moving on then, Joe, I'll turn the discussion on the public hearings to you then.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if you notice, under public comments and announcements, there is an item A, and it's my update on notice of disclosures.
Okay, I missed that. Sorry, Joe.
That's okay. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I will be filing a disclosure by non-elected municipal employee of financial interest and determination. Determination needs to be made this evening by my appointing authority, as required by Mass General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 19. So, Mr. Chairman, it would require the board to vote to authorize you to sign and make a determination on my Section 19 form.
Thank you, Joe. Do I have a motion to move forward?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Motion you took, I'll second it.
Pardon, Don, your comment?
Yeah, the comment was that Michael and I both moved it. So, whoever's motion you took, I'll second that, if Michael.
Okay. We'll have that in the records then, Joe. Michael made it, and Don seconded it. I'll take then a roll call. Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Joe, I'll be in there, I'll be, I'll stop by tomorrow morning to sign.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
So, next we'll move to the public presentation discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe, appropriate at this point just to open the public hearing?
Thank you. Yes, please.
I move that we open the public hearing for Amber Pizza. That's it. I move that we reopen the public hearing for the Amber Pizza.
Second.
Take a roll call. Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose for reopening the hearing is for the board to consider my recommendation that the hearing be continued until Monday, April 12, 2020, excuse me, 2021, at 5:30 PM.
Larry?
Yes, Michael.
I would move that we continue the public hearing for Amber Pizza till Monday, April 12, 2021, at 5:30 PM.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard on this matter as counsel?
Mr. Chairman, it's advised that the board simply vote on the matter to continue and not engage in any discussions or deliberations.
Yeah, I was going to take comments only from the board, because at this time, you'll be allowed to talk when we have the, when we open it up for discussion, I guess. Right now, Joe's proposing.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. With a motion, with a motion that delays the hearing, there is no discussion. It's just a question of voting on, if we take any testimony, then we're actually opening up the hearing tonight. So, the motion is on the floor to continue this until next week, and it was seconded.
Thank you for the clarification. I'll take a vote then. Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Okay, Larry, I move that we open the public hearing for port restaurant and bar.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Michael.
On this matter.
I think we just had this discussion. So, at this point, I'll take a roll call. Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Mr. Chair, I move that we postpone the hearing for port restaurant or port restaurant and bar until Monday, April 12, 2021, no earlier than 5:30 PM.
Mr. Chair, was that motion to continue?
To continue, yes.
Okay. Second, take a roll call. Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
All right.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The next item, you have a request to transfer, which would also be a public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Michael.
Make a motion to open the public hearing by reading the hearing notification. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of General Laws, as amended, that application has been made to this board for transfer of an annual package store, all alcoholic beverages license, now held by Lepinay, Inc., DBA Cranberry Liquors, 555 Route 28, Harwich, Mass., Joseph V. Delamorty, manager to Cranberry Liquors, manager, to Cranberry Liquors at Harwich Port LLC, DBA Cranberry Liquors, 555 Route 28, Harwich Port, Mass., Joseph V. Delamorty, manager of the following described premises located at 555 Route 28, Harwich Port, Mass., large room with walk-in cooler, small office, bathroom entrances at front and rear of building, and full basement downstairs. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on application on Monday, April 5, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 PM, remotely via go-to meeting, at which time all interested parties are cordially invited to dial in. Dial-in information will be posted on the Board of Selectmen's agenda, as advertised Cape Cod Times, March 16, 2021.
Thank you, Michael. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Ed?
Hi.
I'm an I. Don?
Hi.
Michael?
My.
Joe, it appears we have a representative wishes to speak. Is that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we could go through our standard procedure, and then I would offer information regarding representatives?
Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as is your standard procedure. Staff has reviewed the application and the materials that have been presented for this transfer, and you'll see in the packet that staff has no issues or concerns and recommends transfer. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you've done in the past, we now have this evening on behalf of the applicant prospective licensee, John D. Ieta Esquire, attorney for Cranberry Liquors. Attorney Ieta, I hope I pronounced your last name correctly.
That's fine, Mr. Powers. Perfect.
Thank you. We, I believe we have Joseph Delamorte, manager of record, on the call this evening. Mark Blaze, LLC manager.
Yes, I'm here.
And thank you. I believe Kyle Silva, attorney Ieta's paralegal, may also be present. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would respectfully turn it over to attorney Ieta for his presentation and their information.
Thank you, Joe. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Powers, thank you. Members of the board. My name is John Ieta. I'm McDermott Quilting Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. I am here on behalf of Cranberry Liquors at Harwich Port LLC. That is the new entity that is purchasing the existing store, Cranberry Liquors. With me, as stated before, is Joseph Delamorte. You know Joseph. He is the current owner of Cranberry Liquors and he has been involved with this location since 2006. He is staying on as the proposed manager of record under the new ownership. Also joining us this evening is Mark Blaze. As stated before, he's the LLC manager. Mr. Blaze is also a resident of Harwich. Just briefly, by way of experience, as I stated prior, Mr. Delamorte has been involved at this location since 2006. He's run a very successful operation, has no history of violations or any concerns before the board. And, you know, based on that, we are looking forward to many, many more years. Mr. Delamorte is staying on as the proposed manager of record to make this transition with the ownership seamless and smooth. And again, what, you're not going to see really any changes in the day-to-day operations. You know, there is a change of ownership, but the hours of operation remain the same. And Mr. Delamorte will also will be the point person, contact person for this board following the transfer. If the board has any questions either for myself or for Mr. Delamorte or Mr. Blaze, be more than happy to answer those questions.
Any questions? I only have a comment. I'm very pleased that Joe is staying on as manager. He's not only runs a successful business, but has been active volunteers of Chamber of Commerce and other, and other activities in town.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Michael.
Move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Second. Take a roll call. Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm I. Is there any, wait, go ahead.
I move that we approve the transfer of, of the annual all alcohol package store liquor license from Lepinay Inc., DBA Cranberry Liquors to Cranberry Liquors at Harwich Port LLC, DBA Cranberry Liquors, 555 Route 28 as presented.
Second. There's a second? Let me just ask if there's any public comment regarding the?
Yeah, you just closed the public hearing. That's not appropriate, but I, during that process and before this motion, I was hoping to get on the record the police chief's report over the transfer.
Yeah, thank you, Don. I, maybe incorrectly, but I inferred that that was, is part of Joe's report that the staff were positive. There's no. But speaking of the chief, he shows up.
Larry?
Do you feel, Matt?
Yes, Mr. Chair. My memo's in the packet. We have absolutely no issues with this, with this transfer.
Thank you.
That's all I want.
Larry, I just want to, I wanted to point out, we were in a public hearing and you asked if there was any comment. Nobody said it. That's why I voted to close the public hearing.
Okay. We have a motion. Thank you. We have a motion in a second to move forward with the license transfer. Take a roll call. Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm I. Thank you very much and good luck with continuing the business.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
We're next to new business. You had a request for a one-day entertainment license, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the establishment of our Harwich In-N-Out Tavern is seeking a one-day entertainment license because it presently does not, the date in question does not fall under the times and date of their existing license.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
I, yeah, Michael.
I move that we approve a one-day entertainment license for Harwich In-N-Out Tavern, 77 Route 28, West Harwich for Saturday, June 12th, 2021, 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM outside.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for the record.
Yeah, Joe?
Thank you. It's been reviewed by staff and there have been no objections raised by staff.
Thank you for that. Any comments from attendees? If not, we have a motion in a second. I'll ask for a roll call. Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm I. Moving next, we have a series of license renewals.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Michael. I'm hoping you can go through these.
I'm prepared to make a motion. Is the voice pleasure to do one at a time or can I do one through eight?
I would suggest, I would suggest one through eight. This is decent.
Right, prior to doing that, Joe Powers has his hand up.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To that question, you'll see that there are several that are pending departmental approvals. So if the board could just incorporate that in your overall motions and discussions.
Absolutely. And, and Joe, I would ask you, have any of these pendings been fulfilled? Or should I just read it as it's stated in the packet?
I would, I would read them as they're stated on the meeting notice.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2021 seasonal common vicular license renewals for West Harwich Enterprise Inc., DBA A&amp;W, 297 Route 28, AJG Corporation, DBA The Weather Deck Restaurant, 168 Route 28, Port Restaurant and Bar, DBA The Port, 541 Route 28, pending Health Department approval, 30 Earl Road LLC, DBA The Commodore Inn, 30 Earl Road, pending Building Department approval, Rubano's Inc., DBA Scrubano's Italian Market and Deli, 302 Route 28, pending Building Department approval, Schoolhouse Ice Cream and Yogurt LLC, 749 Route 28, pending Building Department approval, Waquasit Inn LLP, DBA Waquasit Resort and Golf Club, 2173 Route 28, pending Building Department approval, Witchmere Harbor Functions LP, DBA Witchmere Beach Club, 23 Snow and Road, pending Building Department approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only discussion I have, Larry, is there seems to be a theme on Building Department approvals. And I would ask if there's a problem with the Building Department or if this is just something that's lagging due to other reasons.
Joe, you wish to comment or make it? Both of you have your hands up.
I can comment that
Ladies and gentlemen.
Witchmere Harbor Functions, they had scheduled an inspection with the Building Commissioner to do their annual inspection and they had canceled it. So not on, not on us, but they had requested to postpone that. So that's why that hasn't been done yet. Not sure about the other ones, though.
Do you have a comment on the others?
Just to say that, you know, as the staff reviews these applications, when they come in, I'm sure it's just a matter of prioritizing as they come. So administration's been working with the Building Commissioner to work through these applications.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'll take a roll call vote. Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2021 seasonal weekday and Sunday entertainment license renewal for Go-Karts, All Karts Inc., 9 Sisson Road.
With, with any previous conditions that were?
Any previous conditions.
Second.
I will note in the last week's paper, that's turning into Disneyland, right?
I'm sorry, couldn't resist.
Too soon, too soon.
Larry?
Ed?
I've gotten three emails from people not realizing it was in April Fool's Day.
Okay.
And I've had.
I guess I need to be careful. I need to be careful of my comment, I guess. But we have a voted motion in a second. I'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, perhaps we could refund the super pass?
Okay. Don?
Hi.
Did you vote? Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Yeah, I, Don, I still have some e-tickets kicking around.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, before I make the motion, I would just ask the town administrator if there's any reason we shouldn't renew this entertainment license. Are they subject to any upcoming hearings or, or problems?
No hearings scheduled and no alleged violations aware of. Again, just that it would be pending Building Department approval.
Okay. I move that we approve the 2021 weekday and Sunday entertainment license renewal for Waquasit Inn LLP, DBA Waquasit Resort and Golf Club, 2173 Route 28, weekday 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM inside, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM outside, and Sunday 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM inside and 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM outside, pending Building Department approval.
And any previous restrictions?
And any previous restrictions.
Second.
Discussion? Take a roll call. I'm an I. Ed?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2021 seasonal in holders license renewal for Waquasit Inn LLP, DBA Waquasit Resort and Golf Club, 2171 Route 28, pending Building Department approval.
Second.
Discussion?
The only discussion I have, the only discussion I have, Larry, is the, is it, is it, is it meant that there's two different addresses there, 2173 and 2171?
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, that second address on the agenda is a scrivener's error. The application address reads 2173 Route 28, and we would ask the board to recognize it as such.
My motion was for 2173 Route 28.
As was my second.
We have a motion in a second. I'll take a roll call. Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm I.
Larry, I just a brief discussion and a point I forgot to point out, but I would also, these both were pending Building Department approval. So I would like the town administrator at least to ask the Building Department how backlogged we are. And if we can get these approved in a timely manner. These are businesses. These are important licenses. So I would ask that we check in with the Building Department and find out how far out we are on all these pending approvals.
Will do. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2021 annual common viculars license renewal for Kate Roots Market and Cafe LLC, DBA Kate Roots Market and Cafe, 557 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
I'm I. Don?
Hi.
Thank you. We can move next to old business. Joe, first item, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a request from the fire chief relative to his contract requesting vacation buyback. You'll see from the memorandum, Chief, Chief the blank, excuse me, is entitled to that option. Should he have funding? He indicates that he has funding to do so. It is the board's decision, but I would, I would not raise any objections to the board approving this.
Thank you. Hello, Dave. Did you wish to comment?
No, no comment. The memo, I think, speaks for itself, sir.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Mr. Chair?
Ed?
I'd move that we approve the vacation buyback for Dave the blank, fire chief.
There's a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. No, no, you start the discussion then.
Well, this is in no way against the, the fire chief, who I think is a terrific person. And the fire department has always had a track of developing terrific chiefs within, which I admire. My only concern in general is establishing any kind of precedent in terms of usage with COVID. I, I'm not thinking that the leave was requested and denied. Yeah, in, I don't know. It's to me, the only caution that I have is that it's a bad look at a time when people are still out of work in general to monetize, you know, leave not taken. And I would, I would say that in the future that it's that there should be a request to take it. If we can't let that happen, then it would be a natural course of action to do this. I'm not going to object to it. But I just feel like, especially in the times we're in, that it would probably be a better idea in the future to exercise the use of the leave by requesting it. And if we can't accommodate that, then of course we would, you know, pay into it. Normally, I wouldn't say anything, but the times were in a somewhat extraordinary.
Yeah. True. Other, Ed?
Yeah, you know, I, I made the motion to approve this and I'm, will vote for that. But, you know, I just want to comment that throughout our employment ingredients and agreements and contracts, we provide for our employees to take, take leave. And it's, I think it's important that they do so. In the safety services especially, it's, it's a stressful job and you need to break away to take some rest and recuperation. In other, other departments of town that can be either physically taxing or in some cases meeting and dealing with the public constantly can be somewhat emotionally taxing and taking your leave and getting that break to recoup and recharge is important. So I, you know, we, we understand that there may be specific cases where due to limitations on manpower where it's not possible, but every effort should be made to take, avail themselves of, of the, the time off that's provided.
Thanks, Ed. Other comments?
Larry, my only comment is Don made my comment. And I, and I do think that, you know, we should be looking at these things. I know in, in a lot of cases on the department head level that aren't direct hires to the board, these things get denied. And I know it's contractual and I will absolutely vote for it. And I thank David for correcting the memorandum. And going forward, this is. the memorandum, and going forward, this is something that the board should look at. Right now, I do believe that people should be taking their vacations.
Okay. We have a vote in a second then. Roll call vote, Don.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
And I'm I. Thank you Chief, and thank you everyone, we'll move ahead.
Thank you, appreciate the vote, and just so, just to set the record straight a little bit, I still do have multiple weeks of leave that I will be taking, so it's not a question of me going without. It just boiled down to the beginning to this point in the year with the deputy having time off and me having an extra week to burn, so that's kind of where the requests came from, I appreciate the board's comments.
Okay, thank you David. Joe, next item on the agenda is update of shared streets, which I'm anxious to hear. You have to unmute yourself.
There we go, yep. One of these days I got to hang, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's not necessarily a positive update. Really what this is meant to get to this evening, Selectman McManus, Town Engineer Griffin Rider had been diligently working and meeting with folks and getting things progressing on shared streets. What we're finding now is we're running into the unfortunate timing of roads projects. As those of you that have lived on Cape far longer than I would know, that springtime is roads repair time. And so we're now entering an area where we're seeking quotes and or potential bids. And we're finding that the marketplace is not responding. And so this is just an opportunity for me to sort of put out there to the entire board that we're finding some limitations now on getting more deeply into the shared streets project. Because we're not getting the response that we anticipated from vendors, and in some instances it may require bids. And the bid process would take us past the May 31st deadline. And so this was really just meant to get this information out there and to see if the board as a group was wanted to talk about it in any direction you wanted to give me and or staff.
Joe, is there any flexibility or understanding about the deadline to offer some leeway?
So my understanding is simply put, no, that it's understood that the funds are expended and the projects are complete twofold by the end of May of this year.
Okay, so even hopefully some escrow that won't work on this, it has to be completed.
Correct.
What's our strategy going forward then?
So that's really the discussion I wanted to make the board aware of. There are some things that we'll be able to accomplish. Griffin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have information on a ramping quote that will be in and around Harvard Center. We may have a vendor lined up, the contract price exceeds the 50,000, so we would have to reevaluate that under the current procurement standards. The quote process, we've identified three vendors, but none of the three vendors are looking to be engaged. So we're running up against a deadline versus availability versus procurement requirements.
Larry.
Michael.
Don't we have money in the sidewalk fund, Joe, that could pay the difference in this?
Ed.
Well, it's not really an issue of paying the difference, it's getting the work done by the deadline, that's part of the grant, that's a problem. And so we need to, I think, now that we have some prices in and realize where we are, we'll need to look at the scope of work that we've outlined in the grant application and what leeway we have on moving things down around. See if we can bring the price and the real problem area is getting the handicap ramping done. So if we can bring that price down and can go with a quote process, we may be able to move ahead much more expeditiously and make the deadlines, so that's where we're at. Basically, now that we have a handle on the costs. Seeing how we can modify it.
Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, at the risk of sounding ungrateful, which I am not. We responded to a grant cycle with the parameters that were set out by the state. And it's really difficult to reach those parameters, it was we did what we were supposed to by the time we were supposed to, and when they issued it. I thought that at the time, it's an insufficient amount of lead time to be able to pull off, not just starting it, but doing it, billing it out and finished, having it completely finished by the end of May. It was unrealistic, but it wasn't our timeframe, and I think the public needs to know that, we played by the rules, we applied to the grant with the deadline imposed by them. They issued the grant, and then the conditions of it, rather than them saying that you can accept it and commence work, were that you had to finish the work and bill it out, which was completely implausible.
Griffin, did you have a comment?
Sorry, my screen just went blank here, just a couple of things, you know, we initially, as soon as we received the money, we attempted to go through the county bid process to identify vendors that could install curb ramps and do striping. But the vendors on the county bid process that are part of the county bid are all booked up and we haven't gotten response from any of them, we have identified a vendor who can do the ramps in time. But they are part of the county bid, and for public construction, anything between 10 and 50 does still require, as 3039M, it does require advertisement. And I guess the concern is with the advertisement requirements, we're really stretched thin for time to actually advertise it, get it out, and then get the contract awarded and in turn get the work done.
You know, these grants come up all the time, is our option to apply again, now we have some of the costs sorted out?
As I understand it, this on the belief that the by next year that the COVID pandemic will be falling into our past, and these grants were specifically a response to that. It's not my understanding that they're going to continue this grant program.
So to summarize, you're looking at bits and pieces we might be able to do by the end of May, or we shut out entirely?
I think the advertisement piece adds a wrinkle. In speaking with our engineer, you know, some municipalities have chosen to go with the full procurement, and I think others have said we just need to get it done, so they've done it a little bit differently. You know, I think part of the thought was that, you know, the municipality themselves weren't necessarily spending the money, it is state dollars, I understand that. You know, nothing's free, but, you know, the municipalities weren't expending the money so they could do it a little more quickly and I guess avoid some of the advertisement requirements.
Well, I agree with Don, this is unrealistic, and it almost looks like we don't do this, we have some money, this goes back to the state general fund then?
Sorry Larry, yes.
Well, yeah, it goes back to Mass, yeah.
Mr. Chair. The other thing, that the rules that Griffin has cited are the self-saying state that is issuing the grant, so it'd be hard to make an argument that the state created its own exigencies so that we could go around the bid process. Because it's their procurement regulations that we're running up against, that are causing the delay. That means that we can't match up with their timeframe for the construction on the grant.
Yeah.
Yeah. Serving. Joe? Michael, or excuse me, Ed, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, that being said, you know, we haven't given up entirely and are looking for whatever alternatives may present themselves or which we can create to move the project forward.
Yes, unbelievable that state would put us into this predicament, but Joe, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that was the substance of what I wanted to get out to the board on behalf of staff and to the earlier comments, you know, we did inquire, and unfortunately the state confirmed that they have these restrictive deadlines. They were good enough to set us up with initial design work that the state procured. But don't give any latitude beyond that for procurement, so they give you a pot of gold and make it really tough to get spent, if I can be blunt.
Yeah, you're actually more kind than I am, I'm trying to be polite here. But thank you, Joe, for that update. Now Megan, we didn't give you a chance to comment, but you wish to?
My only comment is that Griffin has been working tirelessly to try to get this project together and something done before the deadline. This is, you know, no fault of his or the town's procurement team, we've been definitely working to try to get this done.
No, I can certainly appreciate Griffin, your disappointment, all the effort and work on this, and thank you for mentioning that, Megan, Ed?
Yeah. And I'd be remiss assisting Griffin in pulling together the information. I think we need to also recognize Chris Nickerson and Sean Libby. Who pulled together a lot of the cost information that we're juggling and dealing with.
Yeah, the example of great town effort, we We'll put that in the item of great effort and disappointing result at this point. Joe, let's move on then to contracts.
Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, Michael.
I move that we authorize the chairman of the board of selectmen to execute change order number one with Bowditch Excavating Inc. for the Cranberry Valley Golf Course Clubhouse Entrance Landscape Improvement Project for $800.
Second.
Discussion?
Just sorry for cutting Joe off, but this one looked pretty self-explanatory to me.
I agree, and we're looking forward to it, it has certainly something that we're excited about seeing come to fruition. Any other comments? If not, I'll go with a roll call, Ed.
Hi.
Don.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
And I'm I. Town administrators report?
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm very pleased to announce, as you know, we had a vacancy in the Assistant Conservation Agent role with Nikki Smith taking the job in Chatham as the top conservation agent. Very pleased to report that I've promoted Melissa Mallett, who was originally community center, then administration, and then building. Melissa is very well suited for this job, in fact, she has a breadth of experience, excuse me, academic experience that ties with her professional experience in this area, so we have an excellent I can't say replacement for Nikki, but we've got someone suitable to assist Amy, and in the short term, as Amy is sidelined for a few weeks, we'll rely upon Melissa to keep the lights on in conservation, so we're now advertising for an executive assistant in building. I hope you followed all that.
We did. Is that your report, Joe?
Yeah, it is, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Next on the agenda is Selectman's report, Don, I'll start with you. Michael.
I have nothing.
I didn't say nothing, but Joe has his hand up, I have two things.
So, I apologize, Selectman, so Mr. Chairman and members, I failed to neglect on your motions to continue. So the board will be meeting on Monday, April 12, in public hearing of licensing matters. That means the board's regularly scheduled meeting will occur on Tuesday, April 13. Regular session to start at 6:30, so you'll have the license matters on Monday, April 12, with your regular board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 13. And I apologize for not stating that earlier, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We'll put that on our calendar, Ed?
I still haven't done my report, Larry.
I don't have any.
Don, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I thought you said you had none, but go ahead.
No, no, I deferred to Joe, he had his hand up.
Okay.
Thank you, two things, I was through you, Mr. Chair, I was just wondering when we might have the signature pages for the lease extension for the bog that we voted.
Joe, last question for you, you, I think you
I apologize, you have my less divided attention, I apologize, Selectman Howell, I didn't catch all of that.
Yeah, I was just wondering, we voted a lease extension for the Main Street bog. And while discussions, I saw in the newspaper that Leo had been having discussions with the Conservation Commission, but that's somewhat irrelevant because we pushed the lease expiration to a year from this August, I was wondering when we might have signature pages to reflect the the extension of the lease.
Thank you, I'll follow up with staff and we'll have that available as soon as possible.
And my second one, Larry, is going to be a little bit cryptic. I was going to request that you put on an executive session a status update on activities of the affordable housing trust. Update the selection on where we are with the land purchase that we had had previous discussions about.
Thank you, I do remember that, and I work with Joe and Megan to put on the executive session to discuss.
Thank you.
Ed?
No.
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Take a roll call then, Don.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
Ed.
All right.
And I'm an I, enjoy the championship basketball game.